Broadcast has been set.
Good evening. The time is now 5:31 PM. I would like to call to order our first Academic Achievement Committee meeting for the school year 2022-2023. I am Dr. Zippora Miller, Chair of this committee and the District Five representative for the Prince George's County Board of Education. So at this time, if everyone could please introduce themselves, starting with the board chair and then the committee members, and then the Prince George's County Public Schools Administrative Staff and the Board Office staff.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Juanita Miller and as Dr. Miller indicated, Chair of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Welcome to our first meeting for this fall. And I'm sure you will glean a lot of information that will be imparted. Judy. Judy, Dr. Judy.
I was waiting for everyone else. I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Judy White. I'm the Chief Academic Officer for the amazing Prince George's County Public School System. And I have two of my esteemed colleagues with me tonight, and I will let them introduce themselves, starting with Dr. McDaniel and then Mrs. Holmes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kia McDaniel, the Director of Curriculum Instruction. Great to be here with you all this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Victoria Holmes, Coordinating Supervisor for Literacy in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction.
Committee members.
I'm a board member representing District Four.
Hello, everyone. This is Curtis Valentine, At-Lark Member of the Board of Education.
Hello, everyone. I'm Restoran Reece, student member of the board.
Thank you so much. Oh, I'm so sorry.
I am Anise Ellis, Administrative Secretary, the Board Office.
Is that everyone? I can't see the entire screen. Okay, so, all right, great. Thank you so, so much. So.
Participants.
Pardon me?
I was just letting you know you had ten participants.
Great, and welcome this evening. So I'm just going to begin with just stating the purpose of the committee. The Academic Achievement Committee's purpose is to oversee on behalf of the Board of Education, the development and implementation of the school system academic programs, operations involving student affairs, and initiatives designed to ensure effective and timely parent and communicate and community engagement with the school system. We will meet virtually once a month on Mondays at 5:30 PM. The meeting dates are posted on Board Docs, and the topics for each month will be posted on Board Docs prior to the meeting date. As the Chair of the Academic Achievement Committee, I am looking forward to our discussion along with my colleagues and committee members, Board Member Adam Stafford, who is the Vice Chair, Student Member of the Board, Mr. Saran Ruiz, Board Member Thomas, and last and certainly not least, Board Member Valentine. So I thank you. Ms. Ellis, could you please call the role?
Yes. Dr. Zippora Miller.
Present.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Here.
Mr. Saran Ruiz.
Here.
Mr. Thomas. Mr. Valentine.
Here.
And Dr. Juanita Miller.
Present.
We have five present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a quorum. So may I have a motion to adopt the September 12, 2022 meeting agenda?
I move to adopt the September 12 meeting agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. So may I have a motion to approve the June 13, 2022 meeting minutes?
Oh, moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. At this time, we have no registered public comments speakers. So we will move on to the next agenda item. Dr. White, I will yield the floor to you and your team to present this evening's agenda items.
Good evening again. This evening, we're going to talk a little bit about our Literacy Plan 2.0, as well as our instructional framework and our student learner profile. We thought to start the year, what better way than to start with the foundation of the work and why we choose items to focus on throughout the year as it should be grounded in one of these three documents. So we wanted to spend a little time talking about the process by which they came about, how we continue to stay connected to them, how we also want to communicate to the broader community as it relates to all three. So I will turn it over to Dr. McDaniel and Mrs. Holmes. And Dr. McDaniel, are you going to drive your presentation or did you want Anise to drive it?
No, I'm going to drive it. Thank you. I'm going to hear my screen now. It should be good to go. Everyone can see my screen.
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you again for having us here this evening. As Dr. White mentioned, we're going to be laying the foundation this evening, talking about three core documents, our Student Learner Profile, Instructional Framework, and Literacy Plan. And both Ms. Holmes and I are from the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, which is just a small part of the Division of Academics. But you'll be hearing from, again, us this evening and many of our colleagues throughout the meetings this year, the Academic Achievement Committee meetings. So we are excited to be able to provide this information to all as it will connect to many later presentations that you'll hear this year. So as we look at the instructional priorities of the Division of Academics, obviously, our work is grounded in the instructional core. And so all of the instructional priorities that we're going to be discussing tonight are connected to the PGCPAS strategic plan. And so they really help us in achieving our academic goals. And as we look across the Division of Academics, we have a commitment to both equity and excellence in education through this focus on the instructional core. So as we look at the different resources this evening, you'll see that they define why we do this work, how we engage in the work, and what we'll do to ensure that our students are equipped with the skills and strategies they need to be successful within our school system and beyond. So throughout, again, throughout the presentation, we're going to walk through these three documents. And so the Student Learner Profile, that first icon in yellow that you see, it defines our why and what attributes we want each of our students to attain prior to graduation. The Instructional Framework, which is on my far right in blue, provides the blueprint for how we will engage in this work to create an environment for students to make sure they are achieving the goals and attributes and really with the foundation of our curriculum and instruction is founded on. And in the middle, you'll see the Literacy Plan 2.0. And this provides us with what we will teach and the learning experiences that students will be involved in to ensure that students are able to attain the attributes designed in the Student Learner Profile and we, as we implement them, utilizing the instructional framework. You will see there's a link here to a video that was shown to every teacher in our district during our opening week of school during the Systemic Professional Development Day that provided a snippets about a three-minute video that provides a high-level overview of all three documents. So we want constant reminders to our teachers and our staff about the Student Learner Profile, the Literacy Plan, and the Instructional Framework, and how the work that we do each day is connected to each of these. And I'm also going to be sharing with you all throughout our presentation some additional tools that we have developed to share with the school community as well. So again, our how and our why is captured in the Student Learner Profile with our why and our instructional framework. The, in the fall of 2020, believe it's the fall of 2020, we had a cross-divisional group that consisted of members of each division in PGCPAS along with administrators and teachers. We all came together to outline our expectations for students and PGCPAS along with what instructions should look like. And so after brainstorming, doing research, working together, collaborating, that's how we came together to develop the Student Learner Profile and the Instructional Framework. And this just didn't come about from people in our district, staff in our district, having these conversations. Students were also involved in this process. We heard from our middle school and high school students about their experiences, their hopes, their expectations for what instruction should look like, and their expectations for their future as well. And so all of these things, all these conversations, came together to shape and develop our Student Learner Profile and Instructional Framework. So when we look at the Student Learner Profile specifically, we believe that these are the attributes that are important for our students as really the core, as they engage in the core academic content, to make sure that they are ready to not only participate in instruction each day, but that they are able to and ready to participate in a dynamic global system. So you'll see the five overarching attributes here: Global Citizen, Communicator, Critical Thinker, Creator and Ambassador, and Goal-Oriented Learner. And so these are the expectations for each of our students and what we want to hit upon in different, throughout different experiences within the curriculum and throughout their K-12 careers in Prince George's County Public Schools. One of the things I'll note are those icons that you see there next to each of the attributes. You're going to see them come up in many different places throughout our curriculum, throughout some of the resources that we've developed, and I'll talk about those in just a moment. So to ensure that our school community, particularly our students, parents, and teachers are informed and understand our instructional priorities, we've developed several resources. So in the first box here, you see the actual Student Learner Profile, and this is a brochure that includes the descriptions for each of the learner attributes and something that we're continuously coming back to that is showcased on our website and that we are making sure to share with our families. In the center, you'll see something that will be introduced to our students shortly, which are smart cards for students. So these smart cards are designed for students in each of the grade bands so that students can see ICAN statements that are aligned to the different attributes in the Student Learner Profile and just some quick self-assessment reflection questions that they can ask themselves with regards to their engagement with the different attributes to make sure that they know what they are and that they are getting there. And then finally, students and teachers are going to begin to see the icons associated with the Student Learner Profile in different activities they're participating in and the curriculum as an indicator that an assignment or an experience or activity that they're engaging in is connected to a particular attribute. And so we want to provide our students and teachers just with these quick tools to be able to see exactly where they are engaging in these different attributes. And this year, in every one of our Back to School Night presentations, there will be information shared, an overview of the Student Learner Profile for each member of the school community so that our parents can get more information about the Student Learner Profile, ask questions of our teachers and our administrators as we begin to socialize this with everyone in our community. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Holmes to walk us through the Instructional Framework and the Literacy Plan.
All right. Thank you, Dr. McDaniel. So in order for our students to have the opportunities to grow in these skills and attributes captured in the Student Learner Profile, our Instructional Framework defines four overarching categories designed to reaffirm our commitment to creating the most equitable and robust learning environment. So you see the overarching categories listed here: Culture and Community, Curriculum Implementation, Learning Experiences, and Assessment and Reflection. So we feel that these four overarching areas will help us in to create the environment that will be most beneficial for our students to grow and learn throughout their K-12 experience and to attain each of those attributes. So we refer to the Instructional Framework as our how. So we are noting how we will engage in this work. This framework defines our expectations and provides the blueprint for learning and experiences for all students pre-K through 12 to ensure that our students can grow in the areas captured within the learner profile. The framework also defines our expectations for consistently planning and implementing evidence-based practices for all grade levels, classrooms, and content areas. So now we have, you know, what we're going to do. Our Revised Literacy Plan 2.0, it homes in on the focus skills and strategies developed in order for students to participate in environments where teachers are able to teach literacy strategies, critical thinking, and digital skills across all content fields to help them acquire content knowledge as well as mastering reading, reasoning, and writing skills using digital tools and literacies within each disciplinary area. Each content area has embedded those skills and strategies within their respective curriculum documents and will continue to revise and adjust as needed. And just as Dr. McDaniel mentioned, those icons will show up in curriculum documents so that there is that understanding of the connection that they are making to the activities with the attributes that they are, that we are hoping for them to attain. So this plan serves as our what we are committed to for students to achieve the skills and the attributes in our learner profile. So to support our school's community and understand the depth of our literacy plan, a few resources have been developed. So we have the actual plan, which provides explicit expectations for students, teachers, and administrators for each of the focus skill areas and strategies per grade band. And we also have the role of central office in regards to focus skills and strategies that are also identified. The Literacy Plan Smart Card is another resource that we have developed for teachers as they plan lessons, that they can reflect on the opportunities that drive instruction, and it can also drive some of the discussions that they have in collaborative planning. And then, just as with the learner profile and the Instructional Framework, we have a video that was created for our school community to kind of reinforce the focus on literacy across all content areas. And those, as well as the ones we've mentioned today, as well as other resources, you may find on our district website for academics. And you see the email listed there. So we wanted to ensure that our school community have all of the resources and materials that we have developed and will continue to develop to support our instructional priorities. So with that, I thank you, and I turn it back to Dr. McDaniel.
Yeah, so we'll take any questions or comments about any of the information we shared this evening. I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Thank you so much. So colleagues, any questions that we have for the team?
Yes, I had my hand raised. I'm not sure if you can see it, but I'll, I'll go. First of all, I want to say thank you to the team here for this presentation. And, you know, I'm really happy to see this increased focus on literacy. I know that last year, we went subject area by subject area and combed through and talked about literacy. And so to see it all converge here is so exciting. So I just want to say thank you to this team and just I'm excited to see how this all rolls out. Really intrigued with the smart cards. I can't wait to take a look at those and to see how students embody those and use them in the classroom. So I'm definitely looking forward to that. Thanks again to this team. I wanted to ask, one of the things that I didn't see on the slide regarding the different literacy skills was, was the speaking. And I didn't know if that was something that you were considering adding in as you continue to roll out the plan. And then my second question is literacy at home, right? So how are we going to communicate to parents the urgency of literacy and sort of what they can do to supplement and support the literacy work that's happening in the classroom?
So I'll start off by responding to your question about speaking. That is actually a part of it. And, and Dr. McDaniel, I don't know if you want to put that slide back up, but we have three major focus skills sets in our plan. And the first is reading, writing, speaking, and listening. So we realize the importance of speaking in, in our students' education, and it is a major part of our curriculum documents as well. Collaborative conversations is a major component in each of our documents, and we encourage teachers at all times to ensure that within a class period that students have that opportunity to speak and listen so that they are using the academic language on a regular basis. And I believe that your next question was about the community. In addition to our Literacy Plan 2.0, we've created some resources for our families. So we have another brochure that kind of gives a snapshot of all our focus skills and strategy specifically for the community, and you will find that on the website that we mentioned. And we have prepared a set of slides for our community also so that they can have a deeper understanding. In the actual brochure for our community, it talks about what parents can do at home, and it also talks about what our community partners can do in relationship to our literacy plan. And it spells out, you know, different activities and different considerations for our community partners as they engage students in different types of extracurricular activities. So hopefully, both of those, between our brochure for our community and our slides, we hope that, you know, parents at home will have a greater understanding of how important literacy is and what it actually means and how some of their daily activities can contribute to the literacy practices.
Board Member, I was going to also add that that document was based on what students need to know by the end of a grade. And so we looked at what are the, what are the biggest power standards? And then how do we truncate that for parents in a way, you know, we always have to think about the whole system. So what you give a K in one parent has to look different from what you give to a second through fifth grade parent, which should look different than a middle school, which should look different from a high school student. And so if we looked at reading, we talk about what are those simple things you can do at home in everyday life to get your students or their children motivated around reading or motivated around writing? Or how can you allow them to watch their favorite TV show? So let's, let's plug into some of the things we're already doing and making sure that then what are the right questions to ask them about the show? How do we talk to them about the characters that they saw on the TV show? What elevated the plot? What do you think would have happened if, if this would have happened? So we try to find those easy wins. On the academic site, when we first go on the website, which is not my site, but because we title it academics, which is typically what parents go to on any site, so we kept that title there. We put different videos there as well as for our parents, and we also work with Dr. Jackson's office as she does continual meetings with parents, and we bring all of these tools in different ways to engage with our parents through her office.
That's great. And I, I just, you know, I even wonder, because we have such a digital focus in the district, you know, how can we even push out messages, you know, with like literacy tip of the week? Or how can we encourage principals to have a literacy, you know, activity of the week? Or even in some of our online, our video communications and, and we just have so many ways that we communicate with parents. It's kind of like, how do we take, you know, the literacy plan and stretch it to every touch point that we have with parents so that they can, you know, feel the urgency of this work too? But I do like those ideas that you have shared as well. So thank, thank you all so much.
And Victoria didn't mention, and Victoria, I apologize because you may have mentioned it, but her Twitter, she, she actually pushes out messages around. But I like the fact, you know, we're always looking at like, you can't stop where, where you are. How do you increase and grow? An example of that is when we call this the Literacy Plan 2.0 because our original literacy plan, when it came into the district, really was about looking at tasks and it really focused a lot on writing and, and reading and reasoning. But we found that the task, while interdisciplinary, they were set outside of the curriculum. And so for us teachers to actually complete those tasks, they were doing their curriculum and they had to find ways where they stopped so that they could get the task done. What we've evolved to is to ensure that in all of our contents, our core contents, that we, Victoria's literacy team has worked with all those contents to embed, embed the language, embed the practice in their daily curriculums. So that's why when we did this plan, we bring in all the stakeholders. Her team worked with physical education. They work with CTE. They work with everyone because we want, we want kids talking and speaking in every class. We want them listening and collaborating in every class. So it's a huge work. And so I appreciate you indicating, you know, just different ways that we can continue to get that message out there. Because last year, while we introduced it, you noticed that this is the first year we're implementing with students because when you have a district as large as ours, you really have to have a thorough, like, what's going to be the rollout of communication, right? So to get to the place we're talking about, wanted to get to teachers first, which we did at Peep. And when they first came back in the in-service, and now to get to where students have ICAN statements, right? So I can be a global citizen. Our next, now, we'll probably get into it next year. The next level of work is really Kia talked about those icons because we really want people to start looking in their, in their curriculums to say, where do they have an opportunity to be a global citizen? And we should start seeing that icon emerge. So the more that we talk about this, the more we want it to evolve. But we know that when you're rolling it out over 11,000 teachers, 136,000 students, that we're trying to make sure that everybody's on board and everybody understands that everybody speaks from the same voice and same language. So we appreciate that, and we'll continue to work with our parents, our partners.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is Board Member Valentine. I guess my, my question is particularly around how this work will shift what we're expecting from our educators? And so how is what we're, you know, as recruiting educators, as we are, you know, developing PDs, how does what we're pushing out now change how we've done that in the past?
So I'll start, and I'll let my team jump in. I, I think the biggest thing that we as a district, you know, we have amazing things that go on here for all of our students, especially our black and brown children. And I think the thing that And I think the thing that, and the message that we continually need to push with regardless of who's working for us and who we hire is around efficacy of what we believe our kids can do. And I think what these three documents do is set a foundation and expectation, a common language about the efficacy and the expectation of what you're going to give. So when we say in our instructional framework, which is around our staff, that we want you to have, we want our buildings to have a good climate and culture. Right? Every school should be a great school from the moment you step in the door before you ever hit a classroom. It should be about how we greet children. It should be about what we expect from them. It should, it should be about what we believe they can give us back. So really talking to educators then to around, how do we help them with curriculum and implementation? So how do we help them plan? How do we help them understand their standards? What do we want them to take from whether you went to an educational institute around education or whether you're coming by way of a conditional teacher? And we have to teach you that. We want to give you professional development where you learn in either scenario, how to get better as a teacher. The learning experiences that they should, our students should receive every single day that they're in our classrooms. We have to work with them to know that we want, we want the best. We want our kids to be engaged. We want them excited. We want them to have hands on tasks. We want them to do problem-based learning. So I think it's all in how we recruit, how we talk to them about how, what we believe as a district about our kids and, and what do we work, how do we work with them to be the best teacher in front of students that they can be? And all of those things are wrapped up into these three plans.
And the only thing I would add is just that these help to formalize our practices. And so no matter what initiative we are engaged in, we know that we have to, when we look at our instructional framework, we have to be engaged in curriculum implementation. We know that we want our learning experiences. So it just gives us a common language across our district, regardless of which content area we're discussing or which curriculum we're looking at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Adam Stafford?
Thank you so much. I had a question that was similar to my colleague. And so I have a few questions. I'll put them all together. So, you know, as teachers are engaging in this work, I think one of the biggest pushback we find, and I, I know all of you can attest to this, is that across disciplines, people say, well, I'm not a reading teacher. I'm not a teacher. You know, I'm, you know, then folks that are new, coming straight from industry, they say, well, I'm, I'm not teaching reading, you know, I'm expecting students coming in with that skill. And so how, how are you going to shift your PD and supports so that teachers will understand that everyone is a literacy teacher, right? Everyone is a literacy teacher right now because this is our district focus. And then dovetailing off of that, are there going to be like lesson plan and unit plan expectations that have a literacy focus? Like, are they going to have like for every lesson plan you turn in, you have to have, you know, you have to spell out what vocabulary words you're going to teach, or you have to spell out what specific literacy scaffolding you're going to use from this, you know, wealth of resources that we've given you. Like, how are we going to systematize that across the district if we haven't already? And then my third question is, you know, and what, what are some of the deliverables that you all are looking for as a team at the end of this year? Like, what will make this a success for you at the end of this school year?
So I'll start off by saying, as far as our professional development, one of the things that, as Dr. White mentioned, this was not a, a project that, you know, one office kind of took the whole, took the reins and, and ran with it. We had to make sure that we collaborated with all of our stakeholders as far as the all content areas. So it helped to shift even in their own planning of professional development to ensure that these literacy practices are there. So as Dr. White mentioned, when we first initiated the plan, it started off with literacy tasks and we had key literacy skills that everybody had. We had posters in classrooms and our literacy tasks were assigned per month. And you all may remember some of that because students were writing essays every single month in different content areas. And it helped teachers to understand that their content, whether they are a PE teacher or social studies teacher or CTE, that their content is the what that they teach, but literacy is the how they teach it, right? So students have to grab, grapple with text in every single class, no matter if it's artwork or it's music lyrics. If it's a science investigation, it's text. And we are teaching students that text comes in many different forms and fashion. It can be in a physical book or paper that they have, or it could be a digital representation. So we're teaching teachers as well as students that text, when we engage in text, there's a lot that we have to do with it. So we have active reading skills that, that, that we are teaching. And we also talk about those writing skills. How do you articulate, you know, what you're learning? How do you demonstrate your understanding and knowledge? And that's going to come through verbally and that's going to come in a written form. So as we have worked through years of implementing our literacy tasks and then embedding those tasks in curriculum, teachers have that understanding. And with our new teachers, we have to continue to reinforce how literacy plays a part in every single content area.
Yeah, what I would just add to that is, again, remember when we first started this, Victoria has a staff of literacy coaches that they're, we have an amazing staff. They're out in schools now, teaching our children. But they've all worked with content supervisors to ensure the goals that she mentioned. She mentioned reading, writing, listening and speaking. The second goal of the literacy plan is reasoning. So even around mathematics, how do we help everyone around reason? That's that critical thinking and problem solving. So in every single content, students should be talking in every single content, students should have an opportunity to reason. So any area that struggles with what's that look like in their, in their curriculums as they're writing and building their curriculums, this team of, in this staff met with them. They, they looked at examples. They wrote lessons with them so that they could then mirror those opportunities throughout. Our teachers, we, we create what we call the DTA or the directed teaching format where they put their lesson plans in. But because, and, and one of the good things is that when we come back, when reading and math comes back this year, we're going to actually take you through the lens of a curriculum. So I think it's going to be helpful for you to see like what's in our curriculum because you'll see a lot of that we build for them. Like a lot of things that we don't, you, you can build off of it because you should be accommodating and modifying for the students that sit before you. But we talk about vocabulary, opportunities for phonemic awareness, opportunities to manipulate phonics, opportunities for writing or for passion projects. So for students to find those ways where they are doing problem, project-based learning, you'll have a, a chance to see those in our reading and math curriculums. And so we try to naturally build that there for them. And we try to put it in the curriculum. So it's not that one more thing. Like, it's not, we're now we're going to overwhelm the teacher because we want them to do the one more thing, which is why we evolved over time. Because originally our task didn't sit in our curriculum. And so we're excited about where we've grown. And then I'll, Kia, I'll start with the deliverables and I'll, I'll let you jump in. You know, I really think that we're at a place in a system where you know that we're successful if I can get people to even start with the language. So when you, when you begin to talk to people and people are, are all saying the same thing, or when we're in meetings, you know, one of the things I've, I've tasked my team with is when you hear somebody talking about curriculum, you, you need to say, like, you need to reinforce that, like curriculum implementation, like that's in the instructional framework. Or when you hear them talking about this great science experiment, the learning experience that's in our instructional framework, wow, you did great with the learning experience. So we're able to start hearing that back. If I go into a school and I can, I can talk to a child and, and I ask them about an ICAN statement and they can tell me that they know what that is. And they can tell me what that means for them in their own learning because they're attaching these goals to themselves. When I can go to a principal's meeting and they lead a conversation with me around understanding that these exist and, and really trying to grapple with it some more and break it apart. I think that's the first layer of where I, I can say like, we've, we've built something over and overlated against the system, you know? And then how do we get better because of that? How do we then attach that to student achievement in the classroom? So I would say that would be my first layer. Dr. McDaniel, I'll definitely let you jump in.
I'm just continuing to make, seeing those connections again that have our, not only our teachers, but our students using the language of our, our literacy plan. And that we really see our student achievement outcomes increase because of this literacy focus across all content areas. So that we know that it's not just happening in our ELA classrooms. And so that's going to show up in our data throughout the year.
And I would just, just say to, to your team, you know, if we can, you know, try to maybe even nail down some, some, some numbers that you feel confident with that make sense for the scale, you know, and the level of rollout, just so that we can identify some smart goals. So we can say, okay, you know, this is where we want it to be this year, and this is what we put forward and this is what will happen. The, the other thing I was going to say was, I do appreciate that you, you all provide teachers with some of those preset literacy opportunities. But we, we all know as educators, you know, really that last level of understanding is if they can develop some of this work on their own, right? And they can apply it on their own. And so I'm wondering, what are some of the checks? You know, as principal, as you're doing your instructional walks and as people are reviewing lesson plans to say, I know that the district gave you these literacy tools, but you know, what did you develop on your own? What protocols did you put in place? How did you, you know, take this lesson that the district gave you and used it as the floor and not the ceiling in terms of literacy? And that's kind of where you can, we can really see, okay, this was the impact of the PD. Teachers took that and they were able to build on that within what they're turning in consistently. So those would just be kind of my two thoughts just on that. But I'm excited to see this in action.
And I think the smart card, so that Victoria has smart cards for kids with the ones for teachers. Sometimes we create that even for our principals so that that way, when they're looking at lesson plans, it has the questions on there for them to ask the right questions, right? Because sometimes to your point, it's about even asking it like a teacher could have a plan, but what are the questions that you're asking about that plan to drill down to what?
Exactly, yeah.
That smart card, we're hoping, you know, definitely that we will see that in action. You know, unfortunately, not unfortunately, but when we sent our teams back, those coaches are in schools, right? So it's that first level that we see every single day of it in action. And now they're in the classroom. So, but with all things like, you know, you try to find what are the opportunities even in that? Like, because now that we create and we have coaches that work with other teachers and now they're back in the classrooms, we'll have firsthand like, you know, data on, hey, are we creating too much? Does it make sense? Like when you had to do it for yourself, like what did you find? So I'm actually excited about that. And I think honestly, if, you know, once I'm able to get out and our team is able to get out and see some of our coaches in action, we're, we're going to see some master classes, possibly do some videos. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited about, even though, you know, it's, it's a change, what it could bring for us in terms of how we get better.
Because you know what I think y'all are gonna find? I really think that just from my knowledge of the school district and when I'm going out and visiting schools, I think you're going to find so many examples of culturally responsive teaching and learning that are just out of this world when it comes to doing literacy work that teachers are already doing, that, you know, with the right support and PD and, I mean, I'm, I'm sure you all probably already see this. I mean, I think that, you know, it's just, it's just going to take what you're developing to the next level to see how the teachers iterate on it and make it culturally responsive, cultural, culturally responsive liter- literacy, like within their own context. So that's, that's going to be exciting to see.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, I, I'm just going to put up just my kudos to your team, Dr. White. You know, when we began just talking about this and you said, we'll start with the foundation. And then last week during the board meeting, you talked about the academic journey. I couldn't wait for today. And just to hear and to dig deep into this foundation, I remember about eight years ago when there was this big push about 21st century skills and in everything you did, you had to see collaboration, communication, what is collaboration, communication, creativity, and critical thinking, right? But the fact that you, you did, and this was one question I put down, and every time I put down a question, I would cross it out because you answered it, right? Well, you didn't know that, but I was crossing it out. So you talked about how you gathered stakeholders, but one of the most important pieces that you brought to the table was student voice. You said, and we included student voice. And then coming from that, you added some aspects. So I could see the 21st century skills. But the one thing that you don't clearly see in 21st century skills is we're in a digital world now. So when a student is competing for a job, you're not competing for a job like, you know, in Prince George's County. Now you're competing for a job in England or in Australia. So everybody who puts in a resume, depending on the type of work that they, that they're going to pursue, and even teaching may become that way. The job you're competing for now, somebody from Australia can put in the same application. So just to see the global citizen component was huge. And I really want to start visiting classrooms to see how it's unfolding. And then to hear that you, you, you slow rolled it. Another piece that I was really impressed with is I think Mrs. Holmes mentioned that you ensured that the new teachers received the professional development during PEEP. Did I understand that correctly? So you didn't hold back. You said, okay, so if these new teachers are coming in fresh, this is what they're going to know. And so they're going to go in starting with this, this on the table. So I'm really impressed, impressed to see that. So kudos. I wanted to ask about, and, and, and you may still be working on this because you said you're slowly rolling it out. I wanted to ask about when you look at the skills, like when we looked at the literacy plan two point O, you had the reading, writing, speaking, listening skills, the critical thinking and the digital literacy skills. So think about like a, a sixth grade classroom. Does the T, does the science or, or the mathematics or the social studies supervisor look at the balance between, let's say analyzing text and making sure that the students are seeing it multiple times in, in sixth grade? And then they're seeing it multiple times in, in seventh grade. So it's not a one-stop shop?
Yes, definitely. They, they see that. And, and part of our evolution of our curriculum, these, these course, these focus skills and strategies are key to every content area. And so one of the things that this plan actually does, it just calls those, those skills and strategies out to say, as you are implementing your curriculum, these focus skills and strategies are huge. And so you're going to pay more attention there. And you're going to look at what the role of the student is and the role of the teacher is in that so that as you are implementing and creating lessons and activities for students that you are strategic about the design of your lessons. So we definitely want them to understand that, you know, many of these skills and strategy are already in the curriculum. However, as they come across the focus skills and strategies, that there is a more focused lens on how they plan for and deliver that instruction.
Victoria's not giving herself, go ahead Kia.
No, I was just gonna say what you'll also find is that when you dig into the literacy plan a little bit, we have it broken down by grade band brands. Excuse me. And so when you look at those bands, you'll see collaborative discussions in kindergarten. You'll also see them in 12th grade, right? But obviously it looks very different. And what the focus is, it looks very different. And so you'll see these same skills and strategies across K-12, but they, as they progress and what our expectations are for students, how it looks different in the different content areas is what you'll see over time. So there are students are getting multiple experiences with all the core strategies.
Yeah, Kia hit one point. The other point I was gonna make, and I said, Victoria doesn't give herself enough credit because also in that document, we created a chart that lets teachers know what they should be doing at each of those levels, what a principal, it's a, it's a a piece in there for them to know what they should be doing and saying. It's a piece for my central office staff to know what they should be doing and saying. It's a piece for our students to know what we expect of you, like what we expect. So we mapped all of that out. Like our original literacy document, I want to say Victoria told me, I'm telling the tale. It was probably easily a hundred and fifty pages. And like, nobody's reading it. Nobody knows what, they probably couldn't tell you. So we wanted something that was very tangible and easy to read and we're telling you exactly. and easy to read, and we're telling you exactly based on your grades and what we want you to do. And we're gonna build it in the curriculum so that if you're not that person that can, you know, take that, we've given you ways where it's gonna naturally show up.
Thank you, thank you. That, that, that is awesome. That also, that also lends itself to when a fourth grade teacher is looking at vertical articulation, they will know what the third grade teacher has already covered when it comes to this. And so now we, you know, as they move forward with the students, they can just continue the rigor of that grade level. So thank you. And the last but not least, I wanted to, I was gonna ask about how the content areas uh supervisors uh were trained. And you answered that in saying that the literacy coaches um literally guided them through the process, which is great because even though their focus is heavy in content, getting them to see how literacy can come around live in their content really helps in particularly areas like um science and social studies where they're really digging into, into in- informational texts and using multiple so- sources as evidence to support a claim. So so thank you for that. Any other questions, colleagues?
I think, um I would just, I, I have a couple of things that I'll send to you, um, Dr. White offline, just about sort of like your, your, your vision, um, you know, you know, articulating the vision for literacy improvement. Like, you know, I, I think we understand that this is a focus, but like, you know, what, how do we articulate that and do, you know, what are the specific goals that you can progress monitor throughout the year that this plan is happening? Um, so yeah, I'll just, I'll, I have a document that I can send to you that you might find useful. Um, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm making sure that no more questions. Um, this was a really rich discussion and thank you again, um, Dr. White, Dr. McDaniel and Ms. Holmes for this really enriching conversation about what you really put forward for our students in Prince George's County Public Schools. And I look forward to um as it unveils um how rich our students will be when they graduate from K twelve. So as we take a look at um next steps, I don't recall there were any next steps, but if they were from the June thirteenth meeting, they would be in board docs. And I do wanna thank the public, my colleagues, and definitely the Prince George's County Public Schools administrative staff and the board office for joining us um this uh afternoon, or should I say this evening? So I wanna thank everybody for a great meeting and may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it as an ex officia.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I thank you. The ayes have it. So the meeting is adjourned at six twenty-five PM. Thank you, everybody. Thank you again, Dr. White and team. This was excellent. Have an excellent evening.
Yes, it was. Thank you. Bye.
Bye-bye.
Good night.